I call this meeting to order at 6:30 on August the 25th, 2025. Let's stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
We thank you for us being together tonight. Pray that you'd help us make wise decisions, thoughtful decisions. Pray that you keep us safe on the way home and at all times watch over our families. Ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, gotcha.
That's it?
Yeah. Okay, first up tonight, we have Kimberly Parsons.
Good evening once again. I want to thank you again for appointing that rabies control authority. For those of you who had supportive remarks about Friends of Jefferson Animals and about that town hall, about welfare issues for animals, I sent you an email. Hope you got it. If you didn't or you have questions, you can always reach out. I also want to address some comments made by Alderman Keith about requiring some kind of more detailed accounting from Friends of Jefferson Animals. I emailed him. I really appreciate his reply. Thank you so much. But before, as a group, you make a decision to require some kind of more documentation than what they already provide, more than any other nonprofit who also receives funds from the city. I'm asking that you just continue the conversation we've started. Sit down with Sharon, sit down with Dina. Let's make sure that you aren't creating more work for the veterinarians and more cost for Friends of Jefferson Animals and the taxpayers. We already have detailed vet info on the animals, receipts for every expense, and all the money is accounted for. If there's some kind of question that maybe city money isn't being spent on city animals, I assure you that more than $16,000 is being spent on city animals every year. So just have that conversation. That's been so helpful the last, even in the last week. You have our contact info. You have an open invitation to call. I also want to thank Alderman Keith for putting that ordinance or trying to put that ordinance on the last general meeting, and I'm requesting that it be put back on. The folks watching at home need to know that aldermen are allowed to request additions to the agenda, and to my knowledge, no other mayor has outright refused or taken off an alderman's request. Aldermen are the ones who get to vote on every issue. The mayor is a tiebreaker. The mayor is supposed to be a facilitator, not a dictator. And finally, Will Thomas asked today, I'm aware, to fill the Ward Two seat that's been vacated by Ray Hanks. As you know, I asked to fill that seat on Friday. I'm well qualified. I've been following the meetings very closely, and I'm more than up to the challenge, but I also know how things tend to work around here. Two folks wanting it might provide a reason or an excuse to leave that seat empty until the may election, and I don't want to spend money on a special election. My ward deserves equal representation as soon as possible without any added expense, and the fastest, surest way to get that is for one of us to withdraw. I'm the one willing to do that, and I'll defer to Mr. Thomas. I do appreciate those who've reached out to support me, and everyone should know that just because I'm conditionally withdrawing my application, I am not giving in. I will keep doing what I've been doing, which is serving my neighbors and speaking up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jeff Sokic.
Mayor, Council? So I'm gonna give you a couple suggestions. You guys been taking hell for this animal, cat and dog. So here's my opinion. First of all, someone should get some gonies and just pull that off the city ordinance. That calms the city down and reevaluate things. But since it's a county problem, when Dick Collins is in town and his daughter's in town, they stand on their courthouse, all the commissioners there, the judge is there, and they all got their cameras, and they're all talking about the success of what they're trying to do. Why don't you go, somebody, write the judge a letter or email and ask him to meet with the city council and Toja people to see what money they have? Because the county's a big area. They make a lot of taxes off this, and it seems like every time we talk, they're out of the loop. And now I know the judge is busy. He's got a funeral home he's doing. He's running a construction company for a courthouse, and he's our judge. But I think you should approach that where the county is involved, the county has given some money to these folks to help them through the situation. I don't want to see our chief running down the sidewalk chasing a little old lady because she had a cat in her hand feeding it a candy bar on city property. I don't want to have a 911 call and the chief and his staff can't go down because they're locking bathroom doors. Everything we do should be run in like a business and with common sense. Now let's talk about Allen, because I know the mayor does not like Allen. Everybody thinks he's gonna quit. Everybody thinks he's gonna die. Well, Joe McDonald and I and James Hughes, so somebody should reach out to him because he knows a little bit. You ought to buy a million dollars worth of insurance on Allen. So if anything does happen to him, the city receives that money, then they have the money to hire somebody else if you're all worried about that. There's a lot of cities and states that do that for some of their employees. So you all look at, now I know, Mayor, you're just a frickin' peach how you look at people when they're talking. You have no respect for people, and when someone does that to me, I just flip the switch and tell you what I think. You're rude. You're disrespectful for people. You sit here and shook your head when she's talking. You act like you're Congress and you know a frickin' everything that goes on in this town. There's nothing that's said in this town. If Bubba says something or Hollis says something, your best friend's gonna rat you out because they can't keep their mouth shut so they tell everybody else. We know who says things in this town. The difference between them and me, I say it to your frickin' face. I have nothing to hide. You are so rude to the citizens of this town, you tell people you don't have nothing discussed with them. If that's the way you feel about her...
Your time's up.
Well, I'm gonna keep going for a minute. If that's the way you feel about her...
Your time is up.
Your time is up. You're yelling at me?
I'm telling you, your time's up.
Next up, we have Dina Carroll.
Thank you. Councilmen, women, mayor, Ms. Schoolzby is absent today, but you did receive a packet on behalf of her regarding the TNR that we do in the city. I'd like to ask you to look it over. I'm not gonna read it to you because you can read, but there is some very valuable information in there regarding our efforts within the city to do TNR. For those that are watching at home or here in the audience that do not know, TNR stands for trap, neuter, spay and return, and it's what we actively do with all the colony cats that seems to be a big gripe among a lot of people in town or a select few. The very first one I would tell you to call your attention to is the vacuum effect. That's the most important one, and then go on from there. With regards to what Alderman Keith asked me the other day, as far as a more detailed, I don't even know the wording, maybe accounting of the money spent to have a separate account. I had to take in five puppies this past Friday for transport, and I kinda wanna give you an idea, because, and this is on me, I own this. You don't know what it is I do at home on my spare time, three hours of paperwork until 3:30 in the morning Friday night to get 20 animals out of this county. This is one list, and this suggests the 20 that are going. Now, all 20 of these listed here are listed by age, weight, breed, sex, and then they have a tag number that's associated with them. I have to assign that. Those were all county. However, I did have three, five, eight, nine kittens in the city, and then the one that I was called to over by the junior high that was a three-on-one dog attack that I was able to help in the month of August. For each animal that leaves, so there was 20, they each have to have one of these filled out on them. This is like your medical records when you go to the doctor. So these medical records go with each animal that loads that bus. There's 20, and depending on their age, they may have to have a rabies, they may have to have, well, they all have to have two sets of vaccines. They're all gonna have to have a fecal that needs to be negative. We need to check them for Camplobacter, Coccidia, Giardia, all these things that I know you don't know, and that's okay because you don't wanna know them, but how to treat them. And then I have to log all that treatment. So I have a lot of paperwork on the backend of what we already do. When we, I have older dogs, they have to have a behavioral evaluation. So we get a invoice from the vet. The vet is going to do everything on this invoice with the exception of fecals. He can assign somebody to do that because not only is it gross, but it's easy to read under a microscope. So when I receive this vet invoice for this cat that came from the city, this is telling me everything the vet did to that cat. What I have to have when I go on a transport is something called a health certificate, and that's kind of what you're asking me is what the vet told me. If I have to have him sign off on these things, that's like my health certificate to get them out of the city and into another state. That costs me an additional $30, and that only is good for 30 days. So if I have that animal for 32 days, I gotta spend another $30. So just something to keep in mind, and I would love to discuss it more, show you all of those things in detail. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, our consent agenda is A, consider and/or approve Ray Hanks' resignation as an alderman Ward Two. B, consider and/or approve Hutchins Properties LLC application for building permit at 108 West Clarksville, front and back porch.
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Hollis made the motion. Paul seconded. Discussion?
So PZ didn't have any problem with this or anything?
No, there's a form that was laid out on the... Oops, sorry.
Only thing I have a problem with on it is that project is almost done already, and we're just now getting the filling permit, which that happens on a pretty regular basis it seems.
And I just have one thing. Allen, you okay water and sewer, right? Okay, I'm good.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Was unanimous. Up next is our budget workshop, and there will be no action taken at this workshop. This meeting is for a budget workshop on the proposed 2025-2026 fiscal budget that will be presented and discussed. Recommendations for adjustments may be made to the proposed budget. However, there will be no action taken on approving the budget at this time.
Okay, so at the last meeting, y'all had requested that I go back and figure the budget at the no new revenue rate. So this budget is figured at the no new revenue rate, adding in the expenses that we had discussed, and those expenses would be to bring over into the revenue, I guess it's not an expense on our revenue side in the general, but it is from our taxable account, $310,000 from our reserves into our general operating account, and that would cover, if you go over to Department 70, that's our administration. Well, actually, we need to go over to the Police Department for Rabies. That's Animal Control, and the local rabies is in the Police Department, not the General Admin. So the Police Department, the local rabies, based off of what Chief Perez provided to us, the 7460 was added into 73. And then I had to take out about $67,000 out of the capital outlay and the street improvements to fund the water, where we were in a deficit of the water. And then Victor came and spoke on the fire truck. The fire truck is included in that, that $29,000 for the fire department. So that allowed us to have a zero budget on all aspects of the admin, the visitor center, and the water and sewer.
My only comment is, I really hate that we have to do less on the streets, but I know that's kind of the way it is.
So would y'all like to see any more changes to it, or... This is at the no new revenue rate. This is not with the tax increase.
So at this point, is all balanced with the no new revenue rate?
Correct. It is a balanced budget.
I'm making a motion to approve proposing the no new revenue rate.
It's just a workshop. It says we're not doing that.
Well, this is...
Yeah, not that. Well, after that, we'll go down to discussion, and then we'll go into the action items.
Anybody got any changes?
Anybody? Got anything?
I don't have anything different from what I had last week, and we made those changes.
Now, did you say the fire department budget, that this final number here is with that repair included in it? Is that right?
Yes, I added that $29,000 to the fire department.
Well, we do have an action item.
Yeah, it'll be later on. It won't be in the workshop part of it. And I, or once you get to that one, there is a handout on your, at your station that explains about how that motion might go, if you wanted the no new revenue rate or if you wanted a higher rate. So whoever makes the motion, that little, that's right, that handout is there once we get to it.
Any more discussion? Anybody got anything to say?
Nope.
Okay, moving right along, we'll go down to the discussion items. A, discuss, discussion on contracting a new city attorney, resumes received, expectations, et cetera.
So in your packet, you received a draft job description. Y'all know we don't currently have a city attorney, but I think y'all need to be on the same page about hiring one and what your expectations are, whether you want them at all of the meetings or a few of the meetings. And so this opens up the floor for y'all to have a discussion. We have received some resumes for attorneys without posting this job notice. We've received four. One of them is an actual proposal. But we could discuss what your expectations are. If you wanna look at some resumes, I do have those here. If you wanna wait and post the job and receive all of them and look at them all at once, we can do that.
What's the difference between a proposal and a resume? Someone's...
The proposal's the one that the mayor and I met with this gentleman, and he had submitted a proposal for his services. So it gives us a dollar amount in what his expectations are of us.
Got it.
I thought after the last meeting that we had decided we were gonna advertise.
We did, but I didn't have any guidance to what your expectations were. So, I mean, we have a contract from Mike Martin, which was a little bit different than the one from Madison. Mike was required to be at all of the meetings. Madison wasn't. So the attorney that we're interviewing is gonna have to know what our expectations are of them, and that will kind of set what we're paying them.
So that also determines our cost, too, if we're gonna require him to be at all meetings?
I did personally like when they were here, or when he was here. I feel like we were able to ask him questions here, and him kinda guided us, you know, through some stuff, and he was at, you know, all of our executives. I like that, you know, process. So that's just me. I've seen, I've done both, you know, with or without, so I like the with. I feel like it could have helped us in, you know, some of the stuff before we got in some of the stuff.
I agree. I think that...
Now, what was that? I couldn't hear you.
I said, I feel like him sitting here, or him or, sorry, guys, him or her sitting here would have maybe helped us not get in some stuff before we got into it. It would have guided us. So I just like the person being here personally.
Well, and you're just looking at once a month, other than a special meeting or something in budget hearings and things, so I don't think it's asking too much of someone to be here.
Or then it's not too much ask, and we have to pay him.
Well, but, no, I get that, but that can be put in the contract. If they're getting so much a month or so much a year, you know, that can all be included in, and this is what's required of you for that, you know, that fee.
I think everything we've had so far, it's been X amount a year and then so much per meeting is the way it's been said.
We were, what, we paid Mike, what, $1,500 a month?
$1,500 a month, and then he had in his contract $200 an hour once you went over the eight hours, but he never charges for that. Madison, she was at the $1,500 a month also with the $200 per hour over, and she charged us for it. And then you'll, you're also gonna look at the possibility that the attorney may charge us to travel here, so we might have additional travel expenses, and we might not. Mike never charged us, and neither did Madison, so some may and some may not.
I guess it's good to kind of put our wish list, and it's almost like a kid at Christmas. We can wish for, we can negotiate, and it doesn't hurt to ask for some of the stuff that we may want. We may get it, we may not.
What, put the resume, solicit resume, other resumes, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, I would like to advertise. I mean, I don't know who we have. I don't, I don't know anybody, but I would just, like we said last week, you know, post positions, see what we can, what we can maybe find. I just want the best person for us, for the city, you know, for our citizens, so. And I want somebody that is able to tell us and know. I just like to be able to feel like we can talk to the person. I want you to be able to talk to them if you need them. So I may be, my wish may be big, but...
How many resumes do we have at this point?
We have four.
The one that Melissa and I went to talk to was after Jamie Parsons had asked us to maybe have the same attorneys for Jedco and for the city, and that was the reasons we went and talked to the one we did.
And Madison had recommended him, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, everybody wants the guy here full-time or during the meetings and stuff. That's all right, but I don't think it's necessary. I mean, you know, it's one of those deals where we've got sued with two lawyers sitting in the executive session, so, I mean, you know.
And so in our budget, I had figured out the $1,500 per month plus an additional eight hours per month because of the things that we do have going on in the city. So that's about $37,200. That's estimated for this year within the budget. We still have the codification that we're working on, and they've gotta go through all of those ordinances. And then one thing Madison is doing right now is she's agreed to continue working on the tourism rental agreement for this building, for the agreement between the renters and the city for the use of this building, as well as the articles that the Planning and Zoning Commission is working on for the public hearing that's supposed to happen at the end of the year. So she started that project and agreed to continue to work on that project through this month, I believe, through September. I'm thinking September, so through September. So we've got her for those two items. And we actually do have quite a few street and alley closures coming up. I've talked about four different ones in the last, well, since Wednesday of last week, different people have come to me about those, so we're gonna have to get an attorney on those once they start being presented to us. You were gonna ask them.
Well, I was just thinking about what day of the month it was in our next meeting. So we'll post, like we said at last meeting, and do 30 days? Posting or...
If y'all are okay with this job description, or if you would like minor changes to it, I can change it, but I can get it to the Jimplique, to, I could do Longview or Marshall if y'all like, as well as TML. I can get it out this week. I can get it back on the agenda in September if you'd like, but just a reminder, the deadline to submit items for a place on that agenda is September 5th, so we're...
Which is next week.
Yeah.
Well, we can put on the agenda to discuss picking one.
Discussing it, and then we'll get ready.
And then if we get extras in the meantime, in, I mean, you can still post them. We're still scheduled to be on the meeting.
I can do an action item or a discussion item.
Someone's pacemaker going on?
Somebody.
Somebody's on my type. Alarm, something.
Sorry, it was mine. It was an insurance salesman. Sorry.
I know you got a new pacemaker. I just knew it was that loud.
It's getting close to Medicare time, changeover, so, you know how you insurance guys are.
Okay, any more discussion on the new contracting, a new city attorney? Anybody else got anything to say? Okay, B, discussion on appointing someone to fill the vacant position in Ward Two.
So we have two interests, but we heard Ms. Parsons earlier say that she would withdraw hers for Will, and Will's letter to y'all is added right here. So y'all just need to sign, not tonight, but be thinking about and maybe discuss openly if you'd like. Do you want to appoint somebody? Do you wanna leave it vacant? Added the TML response as to what our requirements are. There aren't two vacancies in that ward, so we're not required to have a special election, thankfully. But if you were to resign or something were to happen to you, we would have to call a special election. Just putting it out there.
Fall off the house, off the ladder.
How's that very possible?
I saw you.
Before you cross the street, yeah.
So the two options now is to, in our next meeting, appoint a designated individual or, and that's for eight months, and then that person would have to rerun.
That's correct.
Or leave it vacant for eight months.
That's correct.
And have an election, okay.
So if y'all want to talk about it, at least y'all know what your options are, and we can get it on this next agenda as an either or, or one, whatever you'd like.
Might as well. I mean...
Yeah, me personally, I feel like each ward deserves somebody if somebody is willing to step up, wanna run. I mean, I think they have been without before, so I think they deserve it. I think, you know, I think we maybe sometimes can get better done, you know, with more than less. So I just wanna say thank you for being, you know, brave enough to even consider, you know. I think that, sitting here sometimes, you know, so I think this says a lot about you, you know, your character and stuff, so thank you for wanting to.
Okay, moving right along. Action items. A, discuss, consider and/or approve the proposed 2025 tax rate.
It's your turn now, Bubba.
Now I can do that, right?
Yes.
Is it appropriate now, Mayor? I didn't mean to jump the gun.
Word for word, right there.
Yeah.
Trying to go home before what time? Trying to go home before seven o'clock? You better hurry up.
All right. I'm making a motion to approve proposing the no new revenue rate of 0.411-2883 for $100 for the 2025 tax rate.
And I'll second that motion.
Bubba made the motion. Hollis seconded. Discussions?
For this one, can you call out everybody who is for it, anybody who's against it, and who's here, present, voting and non-voting? So that would be you.
Okay, so first, is it okay? We have discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do y'all have anything to say?
No, I think, I think Bubba did a very good job of reading it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Means a lot coming from you.
He went to school in Jefferson, you know. Okay, so at this time, all is present. We have Bubba Haggard, Hollis Shatten, Paul Keith, myself, Doug Thompson, and April Johnson.
Good job.
And Bubba, how do you vote?
In the affirmative.
Hollis?
Four.
Paul?
Four.
Four with two heads.
Four with two hands, okay. Next up, we have... Next up, we have B, discuss, consider, and/or approve advertising for a city attorney.
Well, I think what we, we talked about a while ago is if she ran that ad, we'd go ahead and put it on the agenda for next month's meeting, to discuss the four that we had, and if she ran an ad this week, and we got another person in?
Well, and that's what, that's what we want you to decide, do you want to run an ad or not?
Oh, I didn't know, but there's no motion right now, is there?
No, but there needs to be.
Oh, I didn't know.
This is an action item.
Oh, 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 then I make a motion.
Very good.
To put this on the agenda for next month's meeting, to review the four resumes that we have, but to also have Melissa post an ad in the paper.
Okay.
I'll second his motion.
Who made the motion to?
Word for word now.
Put it on next month's agenda.
And to put it on next month's agenda, to look at the applications or the resumes that we have received, and also to run an ad in the newspaper, and...
Today, yeah.
That's it?
Yeah, right now, yeah, that's it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Oh, I second.
April second. Discussion. Y'all want to add some more words? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It was unanimous. We have nothing to go to executive session for that I know of, that being said...
Motion to adjourn.
Hollis made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bubba second. We're not going to discuss. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh-oh, April, you are opposed.
Oh, no, I said time.
She said time.
Seven oh two.
Well, we don't have, we have votes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, it's seven oh two.
All right.
All right, all right, all right.
We almost broke the record.
That was quick.
So...
Thank you.